Okay. We've been following the main... Uh, roll call. Jessica.
Here.
Brad.
Here.
Leah.
Here.
Jim.
Here.
Ethan.
Here.
Um, Carly.
Here.
Here.
And I also want to hear your committee's, if I've not really noticed. Thank you. Please join me in a little review of this. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with clear justice, moral, and moral. I will. Thank you.
The Montmore area school district in partnership with the community is dedicated to nurturing, educating, and challenging all students, preparing and empowering them to be productive, responsible, self-refulented others of society.
All right. Moving on to two. Two A is approval of the agenda. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Jessica, seconded by Leah. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Two B, approval of the October 3rd, 22 work meeting, uh, regular meeting notes. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Jessica, seconded by Rod. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We will move on to three, addressing the board. In three A, we are going to welcome Ethan to the board table tonight. Ethan is going to give us his first report of school news. Welcome. We are so glad you're here. Thank you for volunteering to be part of our board. We look forward to all of your insights.
So what is that for?
Um, unless you want to say a few words on yourself or just...
Yes, I'm, I mean, I'm a junior at the high school this year. I'm involved in our school orchestras and also jazz band, musicals coming up. And I'm also pretty involved in the esports program as well.
Fantastic. Welcome. And then we will move on to three B, school news. Do you, Ethan, do you want to start that out?
Yeah. So for our school news, our music department last week had their Fall Choir and Strings Concert. And also musical tickets are going on sale. We have shows on the 10th, 11th, and 21th, 12th. Our boys varsity soccer team played on Thursday, and the regionals were on Saturday in the Dells. Um, our varsity football team had their playoff game against Stone, which they won, so they're moving on to their second playoff Level 2 game, again at them this Friday. Um, our cross-country team played on Saturday, and Joseph Sodder and Abigail Sadler from Grand Estate. And our mountain biking club also played Thursday competition.
Fantastic. Thank you. Dr. Slurno, any other school news?
Well, thank you. I echo everyone's comments in welcoming you. Ethan, you just had a wonderful interview with the board. I want to extend a note of gratitude to a number of our board members who participated in that. And a follow-up interview with President Rothimer and myself last week. It's just wonderful to have you be a part of our team. Two quick announcements. First, Skills USA is getting ready to relaunch. And I want to extend a note of gratitude to Mr. Killinger and Ms. Schultz. They are taking two students with them in November up to Wisconsin Dells to leadership conference in order to get the program off the ground and launch successfully. And I just heard word today that our girls golf team, besides having an absolutely fantastic season, they went to sectionals and did a fine job. But even more impressive is the fact that all five seniors, all five seniors on that team have received high honors from the Golf Coaches Association and award. And like to very much maybe include them here at a Board of Education meeting in November just to recognize their outstanding talents. And then word has it, Ms. Lipska, that the PTO had a successful event that brought in lots of canned food.
Yeah. And not as good as Club Interact. You guys...
Still good.
Had a ton, but we had 500 eating fat pounds of food. We didn't have enough barrels. The students were grabbing us more barrels. We had somewhere, we meant to do tallies, see, but we had somewhere between 200 and 300 kids. They, we ran out of food, we ran out of water, we ran out of everything. It was fantastic. And some of the costumes were adorable. Yeah.
Mission accomplished with neighbors helping neighbors now. I was visiting with them the other day, and their pantry is packed. But that doesn't mean we shouldn't stop giving, so please keep on giving, but let's all take a good start.
Very fine. Board members, any other school news? Jessica?
I met with Mr. Christensen as the middle school liaison on the 14th. It was the end of the week of school conferences, so we sort of just built off the theme of some of the really innovative and fantastic things that are taking place on the, at most schools, so I thought I'd share those. First off, the student conferences were all student-led. They developed presentations, they shared what their goals were, they did a great job. And Mr. Christensen said that prior to COVID, the participant participation rate in conferences was only about 25%, and now it's between 85 and 90%. Like, it's just really been huge and fantastic. So that's really good. In addition to the student-led conferences, I also learned about, particularly in eighth grade science, they're doing a lot of student-directed learning. The teachers have created these playlists of assignments, so students can work their way through the playlist at their own ability level, and it allows the teachers to work with other students who need help. It's helping with student ownership, it's helping, um, the teacher that I spoke with was saying that she was worried about students being willing to just collaborate with whoever was at the same pace, but she said the students are working really well together, and that's going really well. Also, in eighth grade, the math class is piloting some of our new grading for learning that Sarah has been talking with us about. In addition, teachers have been dedicating their PLC times on Wednesdays. They've been working on instructional practices and teaching. Mr. Christensen said the alignment between the sixth, seventh, and eighth has never been so cohesive. It's going really well. They're spending a lot of time talking about the teacher clarity piece, which we've heard about before. Two other things, in the middle school, this was something that was sort of grown out of COVID, is they have slow starts in the morning, so the students all go directly to their homeroom. So instead of, or prior to COVID, they all just mingle, kind of rowdy and wild by the time they reach the classroom, they all go directly to their homeroom. By the time it's 8:05 for school to start, like, we're just kind of like settled in and ready for the day to begin. So he said that was a huge improvement. Then related to our, guess later, the middle school students were allowed to participate in the career fair that took place at the high school. I know from my own eighth grader, it was very fun and very cool. And lastly, two things, because it's still October, it hasn't ended yet, it is National Principals Month, I think we're pretty darn fortunate with the principals that we have. And then it's also bullying prevention month, and they did several things at the middle school. They had a unity day where the students wore oranges, orange, and made a pledge to, you know, be good students and good human beings. So, okay. That's my report. Thank you so much. Questions for Jessica? All right. Thank you. Other school news?
And, uh, this is a...
Just a little bit, and then I guess...
Yeah, exactly. Heads up on that. First, I just want to throw on my NHN board member hat and say thanks to all of the organizations that have helped out with NHN. I was there when we first started thinking about conceptualizing that project, and I knew how much that group was biting off. And the whole group said early on that this cannot be a board member project, it has to be a community involvement project. And the fact that everyone has just embraced that so much is what's made it a success. So thank you very much for everything that everyone's done to support that. School board member hat. Had a really nice visit with Cody Antelisa about a week and a half ago. Just took a little walk around the school, chatted intermittently about different subjects. It was free-flowing conversation, it was great. Wanted to talk to them a little bit about things that they're just really seeing in the school that they're grateful for. Number one on the list was the invalid work that the instructional coaches are doing. They've been impressed both with the work of those coaches and the receptiveness of the faculty to it. This, they're approaching it the right way, it's coming in, it's talking through what they're seeing, bringing good ideas from classroom to classroom, and the teachers just have appreciated it so much because they don't maybe have the same opportunities, especially the teachers at other schools too, that have that unified time together, a little bit more satellite at the high school level. So they've appreciated the back and forth that the coaches have stimulated. Stepping back, I remember at the start of the year, they were both talking about how this is the first year that they've had together where it's felt like a normal school year coming into the year. And I said, you know, six weeks later, you still feeling the same way? They said, absolutely. Talked about the record ticket sales for the homecoming game, which I think it was somewhere around 1,300, and the total attendance about 1,700. That was an amazing night. 500 and some people at the homecoming dance. Students really got engaged in it, which they were happy to see, and huge supportive CTE career exploration day. We talked a little bit about a lot of the ways that we're trying to stimulate kids about what they're going to do after school is over, and not just thinking about academics or the sake of academics. Talked about CTE pathways, youth apprenticeship, other work opportunities that students have. And just talking about the creativity that they're trying to put to use to find these opportunities to expose kids, you know, what might be out there for them, and just kind of give them a purpose about why to go to school, what matters, what classes they should be taking. So really interested in that. Cody actually went to Atlanta late last week, I believe that was, for a conference, that national conference, and talking about a lot of these opportunities. And he was super excited to get alongside with the national perspective, and then a lot of people from the state who went down as well. I haven't had a chance to talk to him about that, but look forward to his reports. Huge thank you from them to the, to the board for supporting everything that we do with CISA. They just said it's, again, just the effort that we're showing, the commitment we're showing to them on professional development means everything. Beyond what we can do on a regular basis, is really let them know that we care about their development. We chatted a little bit, this is, you know, some issue close to Jim Myers, who's our, that came up, Silver Board Program. We've discussed sometimes about the opportunities that are there, and maybe figuring out ways to better advertise some of these opportunities and aggregate opportunities, perhaps give teachers, you know, an easier pathway to let kids know what could exist in their own classrooms too, when they're looking for help. And the last thing we touched on was something that I've wondered about a lot since I got on the board even before, just how to celebrate and share things that happen in our school district with the broader community. I feel like we do an excellent job with our teacher base, with folks who have kids and are connected to the school, and we try to get out there, but I know if I pulled someone aside on this street who doesn't have a kid in school, that they wouldn't have half the idea that we do being exposed to it every day of all the good things that are going on. I feel like in the midst of all these conversations about operating referendum and everyone else we're bringing forward, they, finding ways to show the return on the investment that they're making on a regular basis, I think it would go a long way towards supporting the schools. So we didn't come up on these solutions there, but just wanted to make sure that we kept that topic out in front of her.
Thank you. Questions for him? Thank you for both of our representatives for reaching out and having some conversations with principals. All right. Moving on to three C, citizens' comments. All right. Moving on to four. Four A is our personnel transactions. Do you want to make a note?
I sure do.
Something that's on there?
Exciting news for one person, but you know, kind of sad news for the rest of us. Carol Perrell is preparing to enter into retirement at the end of this school year. Many of you are part of the Safety and Wellness Committee, or have been a part of the Safety and Wellness Committee. You know, Carol has just been an instrumental partner with us in this effort, has a deep, deep passion for supporting kids. I hope you don't mind, but I've taken some notes that were shared with me from our HR administrative assistant, began the career here in Mount Horeb. This is a great career trajectory, I love this story. Started out as a long-term substitute, moved into a paraprofessional position, and then continued on as a teacher, has been working as a reading teacher with us since the 2002, 2004, '05 school year. And went on to even get her graduate degree. So talk about a success story, and somebody who's really left a very positive imprint on our school district. We wish her only the very best as she prepares for a well-deserved retirement.
Thank you. Board members, I'll entertain a motion to approve personnel transactions. So moved. Second. Motion by Leah, seconded by Jessica. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to the consent agenda, is there anything anybody would like to pull out?
Motion to approve.
A second. Motion by Rod, seconded by Jessica, to approve the consent agenda. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Moving on to six, our discussion items. First, we'll start with our committee member reports, and we have Leah Lipska reporting first on community and legislative engagement.
Yep. So our last meeting, we met here at the middle school, and we got tour, and there are some interesting spaces being used as classrooms, like storage closets. And then we met with Bray and went over some possible plans. We had some great discussion. We were here way later than we should have been, talking about all sorts of different ideas. So I have a feeling Bray's going to come back with maybe some more ideas based on some of the kind of off-the-wall things that were thrown out, but mostly by me, but it's fine. So now we, our next meeting is Wednesday, where we'll talk about athletics slash practice fields slash fields slash pools slash anything athletic-y. That will be Wednesday at the high school, 6 o'clock, at the professional learning, is that, is that what it was called? Buffalo Theater, if it's not Buffalo Theater.
Yes. Board members' questions for Leah. Thank you very much for your report, and we will move on to education committee. Carly.
So, education committee met about three weeks ago, the beginning of October. In our curriculum update, we had a few, a couple updates around preliminary screening assessments that the teachers have done, that they're reviewing and reviewing for students with right now. We talked about using our next meeting to meet with the high school science team to review some of the classes in the high school science curriculum. In the equity updates, the equity team had met with NEMI the week before to, excuse me, continue those discussions. And they were going to be meeting again at the end of this month, focusing on implicit bias. And we talked about a community meeting tentatively scheduled for December 8th, where the focus would be talking about the community standard for how the community, how should the school and community respond to covert racism? And it sounds like there's going to be some work with students for that, before that. We spent a good amount of the time talking more about grading and assessment task force updates. Sarah again gave us kind of an update of the work that's been done with the task force to date and where they are. And then we talked a little bit in more depth about grading, more traditional grading practices, and what some of the pitfalls or disadvantages of some more traditional grading practices might be, including things like grading homework, and pros and cons of how that contributes to a student's grade, grading on a 0 to 100 scale versus a different, a different scale that maybe doesn't sink a student's grade if they get a zero, grading that curve, grading based on participation. So it was just a good discussion to learn more about grading practices and policies in general. And then we moved on to reviews of some of the policies that we don't have up here yet, but that we'll talk more again on retention and promotion.
Thank you. Board members, any questions for Carly? All right. Moving on to six B, information and advocacy report, advocacy report. Member of students receiving scholarships, work progress, and work experiences. That's the search target coming down to all of us on this one.
Yeah. I'll be introducing Jody Baber in just a few minutes. So Jody Baber and I are going to be tag teaming this report, so I'll give a couple sections if that's okay, and then I'll hand it over to Jody as well. So as Diana said, I'll be, we'll be talking about not only access but completion of professional certification and workplace experiences. So where would we like to start, Dr. Slurno? So if you want to go actually to the Fire Academy and EMT Academy section, the next one. Thank you. So we are pretty fortunate, except three, four, or five, COVID throws everything off, three, four, or five years ago, well, 18, 19, to partnership with Mount Horeb Fire Department to bring Madison College, EMT, and Fire Academy into Mount Horeb, into the Fire Department, where students can take a Madison College class and then do some other hands-on work right within Mount Horeb, not having to travel to the east side, the Churax campus. And on the charts, if Dr. Slurno scrolls down a little bit more, you can see over time the EMT and Fire Academy, the Mount Horeb student participation. You see the EMT Academy sort of drifting off after the 2021 school year. The reason being is Madison College pulled back on that class because they raised the number of hours, the type of work that students had to complete, and it was just too much for an everyday high school student to do. So they are reworking that class to be an EMR, an emergency medical responder class, instead of an emergency medical technician class. So we look, hopefully take advantage of that soon. I don't know if it's going to happen this school year, that's why I didn't put any numbers down, sorry, for next school year. But like I said, we're going to be keeping our eyes on that EMR class to make sure we can offer that for our students. But the Fire Academy is still going strong. As of now, we have four students who will be in it for the spring program. And we have been advertising and marketing to school districts around the area, because we want to keep this course at Mount Horeb for our kids, they don't have to travel. So hopefully students from Barnville, New Glarus, Belleville, Verona will come here if they're interested. Any questions on that?
Question.
Yeah, Ethan, what you got?
Is it taking place during the actual school hours?
Yes. Yep, yep.
I don't have a minute for this. Is there a schedule for that?
Yeah. It'll take place from about 7:00 to 10:00-ish, Monday through Thursday. So it is a little before the school day, but we wanted to make sure that students weren't missing too much of their class period, so even on your current schedule right now, you go until, what, 9:45-ish for your second class? I'm trying to think. No, you have stat.
10:00.
Yeah. We're trying to get students back, like, at the end of stat, basically, so they can get to their third or fourth period, whatever that next number is class. Good question. Yeah. Work experience. So we have a couple different types of programs, work experience, work co-op, and youth apprenticeship. And I'll invite Jody up on a little bit to talk about youth apprenticeship. But over time, we've seen work experience programs sort of drift off because we really were promoting youth apprenticeship. But we have found some instances where I met, when Brian Johnson and I met with our high school counselors, that they really advocated to bring work experience back for a particular set of students. So work experience, very similar to youth apprenticeship, but it's not necessarily tied to a class that they have to take. And it's not necessarily tied to the youth apprenticeship disciplines, areas as well. So a student could work at a local business, not be tied to youth apprenticeship, still get credit, and still get pay, which is nice. And our, our school counselors really saw students who maybe fit into a certain area, particularly maybe at risk, where youth apprenticeship just wasn't the fit, and this work experiences is. So they developed a pretty strict set of criteria for this program, and it's been working out really good for, for those students, which is nice to see. We do have then work experience transitions, which is our 18-plus program, where those students then spend part of their day in our 18-plus program, but then do work in our community as well. This is where I had it, sorry. This is where I have, I'm so happy and excited that Jody took me up on the office. This is Jody Baber, colleague, friend. She's been in our district for six years now.
Starting my sixth year, yes.
As a business ed teacher, and her third year as our youth apprenticeship coordinator. So she jumped in COVID-ish time.
No. No? No. I earned me on time.
I earned me on time.
2017.
She's, she's been very, no, for youth apprenticeship.
For youth apprentice, ah, yeah, right, right. Yes. We started normal year, and then I ended it.
So now she has a normal year?
I do. This is my six-year teaching, and this is the best year yet.
Nice, nice. So I'm handing it over.
Best year yet. Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll take it over. Okay. So, Dr. Slurno, will you go back up to the CNA part, please, if you would, for just a second? Because I didn't, well, I saw you looking at that, I want to kind of address this briefly. So the Fire and Academy that Sarah was talking about, this is related in such a way that certified nurses can take a course, and I manage that part, so that's why I'm speaking to it. So you can see over time, there's kind of an up and down with the CNA courses. Our students are able to take the course through quality CNA at locations like Fitchburg and New Glarus. And so at certain times, students seem to enjoy this, I think it's word of mouth, or it's just a sign of the times when people are deciding to do it. You'll see that the tallest uptick there in the 21, 22, that is actually a spark that happened during our virtual year, where students were able to take CNA courses while they were at home and thought that was a really good option. And so as they did that, they finished that year, headed into the next year, and kind of brought on more. I'm expecting, we have two students right now, for this school year, I'm expecting that number to go up, a couple more. I don't know that for sure, but I would guess that that is going to be the case, will have an increase in the number of, of students earning their CNAs. So that actually is a related course then to our youth apprenticeship program when they would be in health science. So that's one of the benefits of being able to have a CNA course offered. At this time, if you want to scroll down to where we were, and you were looking at that graph, yes, right there, yes. Oh, I'm so sorry. Dr. Slurno, wait a minute, I want to see youth apprentice, is it 25?
I think it's down here.
Okay. Yes, okay. Yes, yeah, it's fantastic, yes. So if, just to refresh your memories, or to give you a really quick glimpse into what youth apprentice is and maybe what it is not, it is a program that is facilitated by the Dean County School Consortium, which is also reporting into the Department of Public Instruction. So we have a couple of people making sure things are done in such a way that is a set program, and kids can go out and work in the workplace, and they can work here, they can work in Madison, wherever they can travel within a reasonable amount of time. They need to earn 450 work hours to complete the program, and they also are required to take related courses. So that is different then from like work experience by itself, and to a certain extent, it mirrors the supervised co-ops that are also offered through the Department of Public Instruction. This is one of the avenues that, that students can take, and I, that is my, I am this overseeing this for Mount Horeb's high school. So in the past few years, you can see, it started out, and we've been just growing it and trying to figure out ways to get the students more involved and aware of what is happening with the youth apprentice program. And this past year, in 20, like, 21, 22, there were at one point 28 students in the program, and there was a little bit of fallout this past year with students. I think the program worked, they decided that they didn't like what they were doing, it wasn't going to be for them, and so they exited the program, and that's completely within the natural course of, of having youth apprenticeship. This year, I am really hopeful, I have 34 students right now who are with me in the youth apprenticeship program. That number may, it may go down by one or two, it may increase. Students are able to enter in this program until December 31st, technically, as long as they're able to get 450 work hours in by August 31st of that, of 2023, they can be in the program, and they can be released from school for two periods, sometimes more depending on their schedule. So I'm going to pause here for a moment and let you look at that, but what questions do you have about the program and what you're seeing up there?
If the student's a senior, so they, they still have August, or did they have done it?
They do have August. Yep, they do have August.
So if they would graduate, then this could just be added to their transcript or...
It, oh, yep. And thank you for that. I'll clarify. The students get two credit hours, no matter what, for doing this program, even if they decide they, they would rather some, I have a couple students who say, I want to work after school, and I want to keep my full course load at school, they still receive the two credits, and it's elective credit. So that goes on their transcript at the end of school with graduation, that's already a done deal. And then what we wait is to see how, if they get their 450 work hours in, and that's a certificate of job readiness in those pathways that comes from the DPI. Thank you. What other questions do we have? credits, and it's elective credit. So that goes on their transcript at the end of school with graduation, that's already a done deal, and then what we wait is to see how, if they get their four hundred fifty work hours in, and that's a certificate of job readiness in those pathways that comes from the DPI. Thank you. What other questions do we have? All right.
Can you talk about the reimbursement that comes from this?
Fantastic, yep.
And how hard you work at getting it from the district?
Happy to work. So because we have students who are certifying, they get certification for youth apprenticeship if they finish, they're certifying in, like, Skills USA, they're certifying in CNA work, the Fire EMT, firefighter EMT. Students who receive a certification during the school year are eligible for career and tech ed funding to be sent from the state, from funds that are allocated for CTE. So I put together all the students in the high school, and if they've graduated within this past year, their certificate, not the kids themselves, but their certificate allows us to have funding sent to us to continue our programs and support things like youth apprenticeship and CNA firefighter skills. I'll leave it at that, there's more, but that's pretty much the whole. Does that answer your question?
A lot of record-keeping, and you do it so beautifully.
Oh, thank you.
I love getting those emails telling us how we've gotten.
I like the emails that come back to say, look, you've been awarded. Yes.
Jody, could you speak to what this does for retention engagement of some of the kids who see these opportunities?
Yes, I would love to. I actually have, today I had a student who reached out to me and said, I'm really not interested in doing electrical work. I heard that Jackson Cole, and I'm going to say his name because I'm super proud of him, he is at Plastic Ingenuity, and he's working there as a machinist, and he is being given a scholarship to go to MHTC when he graduates to enter into a two-year program there, and it's completely paid, and he does not need to stay and work for Plastic Ingenuity, he is released as soon as he's done, if he'd like to, but Mike Schubert told me, he's like, nobody leaves here, he's very proud of that. So Jackson is a case in point, and now, you know, people are hearing about this, and they're, they're interested in feeling like they might have something to do while at school that, you know, keep your eye on the prize, and you definitely need to stay in school, do your courses, do the things that matter, core work, and then get that diploma, and you have something waiting for you that might give you a little bit of a, you know, light at the end of the tunnel through high school. Several students that I'm working with now just are struggling through trying to figure out why. Why do we need high school? And I even have kids in my youth apprenticeship program sitting next to the ones in my class saying, you have to do it, this is youth, I'm working, but you have to get through high school, you can't do it if you don't have a high school diploma. So I feel like this, if we can just get more, like you're talking, Adam, I'm, yeah, how do you get, how do you get this for everybody to hear, students and community to know exactly what's happening, we want more of that, so that's some of the goals I have to. Does that answer that question?
It absolutely does.
All right, fantastic.
Jody, can I ask another question? Do we have sort of some, or do you have some established partnerships with businesses, or do, like, the students seek them out? I mean, maybe both?
It is both, yeah, that's a good question. So I typically have STEM engineering and health science, and architecture and construction are my three big ones where I have people that always have a youth apprentice, and I'm trying to build more relationships with businesses that we can get a student in, like Midwest Prototyping, always a good example. Well, they have three this year, and they had three last year, and so we just kind of trade places, you know, they have three openings. But I do have students every year that come to me saying, you know what, I know the owner of Clausen's, and I'd like to work there, can I do that? Well, yes, that's a fantastic opportunity, are you thinking about being a baker? I am. Well, then we start, we build that partnership together. So that is one of the things that youth apprenticeship does that maybe work experience doesn't, is trying to have businesses provide an opportunity, not only for students to work for them, but also they have a way to get the workforce in that they want. So, yeah, I'd like to get, I'd like to get more of that, I'd like to be able to have every single one of those. Information technology, that's, you might see that, it goes one, 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 and then there's nothing. I'm working very closely with John Van Ooyen at MHTC for a student to work with him, and he's looking right now for marketing. So he'd fall under the marketing umbrella instead of information tech, but it does not matter to me, as long as they are interested in getting students to come and work, it'd be great. And a win, I just have to say this, too, a call out to UW Health, they have never been able to offer youth apprenticeship positions because they are super large. And this year, for the first time, we are taking advantage of UW Health offering to Dane County youth apprenticeship for students. Izzy Walker is our medical office youth apprenticeship, he's a perfect one for this, and she is working here in town at the office. I went today to see her, and she's escorting people to rooms and checking their vitals, not me today, I believe, but she knows how to do that, and she wasn't able to get that without the support of UW Health. So we're trying to get more involved in that way, more partnerships as we can.
It would be awesome if we could do some sort of, I know other districts do this, like, business spotlight, who are our partners, like, you know, like, to your point about highlighting the good work that's happening in schools, but also, you know, our partnerships, you know, that could be easy social media posts that we could be doing.
So I have.
Maybe you're a writer.
My students, as a requirement this year, are writing their own student spotlights, and in their student spotlights, it is their employer and what they do. I have an appearance statement and a mentor statement, but I have three of them that have been sent to Mount Horeb Mail, hopefully they'll be published soon, and the goal is all of them, all thirty-some are going to be as a cadence into Mount Horeb Mail. I'm hope, it's my, it's a question-answer format, I would like to make more of that at some point, so there's a stop happening in place, and I like that idea, to try to get more spotlight to on the employers as well. Yeah. Okay, I don't think I have anything else to talk about there, unless you have more questions for me.
I got one more for you.
Yeah.
Your trajectory is obviously going up, how scalable is this based on resources we have right now, what are their support might need if it lasts some more?
Um, I feel like if we get any, I say that, if we get any bigger, meaning if this pool of youth apprentices becomes any bigger than it is, it's, it'll be difficult to support in the current way that we're handling this now. I feel like there's efficiencies being made, there's ways that we're figuring things out, there is, I gotta, me personally, I have a wild call out for my instructional coach, Stacy Meister, without her this year, I don't know what I would do. So she is helping me navigate how, me personally, how I can keep this program going, how I can supply resources of my own, where I can reach out for help. At some point in time, I would think that, you know, sixty kids would be, I don't, that's just a number I just made up right now, that's like double what I have, so that would be hard to do it justice. The kids, as I'm doing this, the third year now, I'm seeing that the students don't think they want my involvement, they don't think they want me to check in on them, they don't think they want to do a student spotlight, they don't think that they want a Q1 evaluation, but actually, they do. They, and they like to talk about it, and in my class I have, and I say in my class because now I have them in my advisory, so I see them once a week, and they are discussing amongst themselves where they work, they have time to vent, they kind of get like, oh, but I had this experience, well, how about that, and you should make sure you go to high school, and you need to do, like, there's some stuff going on that I didn't really expect. So if there's more, more people in it, that kind of, like, discussion might need to, we need a couple teachers to do it, or, you know, so forth. Does that answer that question? Yeah, it's, this year is, I'm telling you, this year is fantastic, and I think we just bounced right out of shutdown into something great, so I think, yeah.
I think I can say for the entire board just how grateful we are for your leadership.
Thank you.
The things that you're able to do, the experiences you're able to provide, the networking within our community is just incalculable, so thank you, really.
My pleasure, this is one of my favorite prelims, I like being in the classroom too, so I can't really say, but this is good, I like being here tonight, thank you.
And on a personal note, I want to also extend a note of gratitude for the attire you're wearing tonight.
I noticed that, too.
The Americas team is playing against the New England Patriots tonight, let's hope we win.
Yes, I know, I was just so, I thought maybe, you know.
Will some little messaging?
Yes, I, yeah, it blends.
Fair.
Yes, okay.
Thanks so much for coming in.
Thank you, thank you, I appreciate your time tonight, thank you.
Fantastic. All right. One to six B, information and advocacy report, number of students receiving, wait.
Direct.
That's what we just did. We just did all of them. All right, so then we can move on to our action items. Just look at Scott because I know he's on deck for all of these. So, sorry, with seventy, adoption of revised budget for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three.
Good evening, everyone. You may recall this is the time of year when we make budget revisions as necessary, and most importantly, we adopt an official tax levy for the school year. So I won't do what I did at finance, where I spent a lot of time talking about a variety of things, but we did do a little bit of walkthrough memory lane of how we got to this point. Since all the board members are here, I do want to say, again, repeating what I did at the Finance Committee, thank you to, not only the current finance members jumped on board in May, we got through the annual meeting that led us to this evening, but also finance members from last school year, because you were involved with the actual adoption of an original budget back in April. So, thank you, and for those of you that have been on finance meetings many times in previous years, thank you as well. So you may recall that you've seen this format in the past, this is the format that we use per state statute to notify the community of any budget revisions that we need to make during the year. The budget revisions that you have in front of you is exactly the budget from the annual meeting, and the budget from the annual meeting is the budget that the board adopted and created back in the spring. So what we're looking at tonight is some revisions to that original budget, and the revisions usually at this time of the year have to do with finding out some funding sources that we have coming in, updating our projections to now actual numbers, and then modifying some of the expenditures according to what those revenues look like. So there are three tables in this document. The first one is our general fund, you may recall, that's our general operating budget. The second one is our special education fund. You may recall that special education is a budget that we have as a standalone item in our financials. And then a third table called the debt service fund, this is where we keep track of all of our debt levy that we have every year, and our principal and interest payments on our debt. So we'll talk about each one of those in its order as you see at the top. So we'll start with the general fund. The two common revisions that happen in October is number one, we find out how much state aid we're going to officially be receiving. We're receiving just over sixteen thousand dollars more in state aid from the projection that was given to us back on July first, so that was good. It's important to note, though, that when we get new additional state aid money, it doesn't mean necessarily new money for school districts, because if the revenue limit doesn't adjust, it just means that the tax levy is adjusted to account for that increase. But nevertheless, we have to account for the exact amount of state aid that we'll be receiving, so that was good. On the tax levy side for our general operating budget, we're making a revision here, just over ninety-nine thousand dollars, that's an increase in our levy based on what the revenue limit provides. So overall, you'll see an increase in revenue of ninety-nine thousand, three hundred, three hundred and ninety-five dollars for our local sources. As far as the state and federal sources go, just a couple of items to point out, you may recall that we just recently got notified by the Department of Justice that we're getting a grant for digital mapping of our schools, that's awesome and amazing, that's accounted for here, we just learned of that. On the federal side of the House, we're not only getting clarification now from the federal government on some of the grants that we receive each and every year, such as title grants that Sarah Strachan helps manage. We're also recognizing that we're receiving, we received back at the beginning of September, that supplemental aid, that's going to be part of faculty stipends, so back in the spring, when we created the budget, we didn't know that was something that was going to happen, so we're recognizing that in our budget. Overall, increase of revenue of just over four hundred and twelve thousand dollars. Many of our grants, as you can imagine, when we see fluctuations in revenues, it also means fluctuations in expenditures to account for that. So that's accounted for in our expenditure side. Most notably on the expenditure side is our personnel adjustments, when we hire staff, you may recall, each and every year, I try to remind everybody that we start the school year, we're still hiring staff, benefit elections and so forth, when you hire personnel through the HR office, those are also accounted for here as well. The, we, you may recall, we have two fund balances for this school year. One is an assigned fund balance, in the annual meeting booklet, we address that our assigned fund balance of about five hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars was planned to be used for one-time expenditures this year. You may, you may say, well, gosh, why is that, right where Steve's cursor is, why is it zeros across the board for assigned? It's because this is what our expected ending fund balance is for assigned at the end of the fiscal year, and at the end of the fiscal year, we're budgeting that that will be back to zero again. The projected ending fund balance for unassigned, which we'll talk about in a minute for a motion, simply means that we have a balanced budget after the assigned is accounted for at the end of the fiscal year, just under six point eight million dollars. Any questions on the general fund? Okay. I will also note that when the Finance Committee reviewed this material last week, we had a lot more in-depth conversation about some of this, but more than happy to answer any questions. On the general fund, the second table is our, as I said, our special education fund, we have a couple small revisions to make, to make in our ESAR. You may recall the ESAR federal funds that we have, these are just accounting for some additional increases in revenue and corresponding expenditures to account for that. The debt service table is the next item. You may recall a year ago, from the annual meeting to last October at this time, we were able to add an additional six hundred and fifty thousand dollars into our tax levy to account for prepaying some additional debt, which was a wonderful opportunity for us back then. As we navigated into the summer for the annual meeting in August, we found that we were able to add an additional one million sixty thousand dollars this year, so just over four hundred thousand dollars from the prior year, to be able to maintain a stable mill rate based on our projected equalized values, which our projection was fairly small at that time. As we navigated through the month of September and October, not only did we find out how much state aid we're receiving, we also found out what our equalized values were, and because equalized values went up over fourteen percent, it lends itself an opportunity for districts all over the states that saw, pretty much by state average, that values went up about that same amount, that districts do have an opportunity, if they so choose, to prepay additional debt. Now, we were already planning on a one million sixty thousand dollar additional debt payment back at the annual meeting, and when we saw the increase in property value, we thought, okay, there is some opportunity if the district chose to take advantage of that. This particular table shows an increase of three hundred thousand dollars. What it does is it allows our mill rate, which was eight thirty-four a year ago, it allows it to drop down to seven dollars and sixty-five cents. If we, if we didn't do anything and we kept what we had at the annual meeting, it would be at seven dollars and fifty cents. So this allows a district to conservatively add something to additional prepay on its debt, which is wonderful for a district and for an organization to do, yet still being able to recognize the value of the mill rate being lower than what we had a year ago. So that's what the Finance Committee talked about. The revision that you're seeing, again, up on the screen is simply to show an increase of three hundred thousand beyond what was at the annual meeting, and then correspondingly paying an additional three hundred thousand in expenditure toward principal to pay down future debt. There are, I'll stop right there and ask if there's any questions first. Thank you for listening. There's, as typical this time of the year, there are three motions that we ask for the board to consider. We always like to talk about those motions at the finance level first before we recommend them. them to the board. So the revisions look similar because it's the language we use each year. Of course, the figures are different because every fiscal year is different. So the first, I'll just point out what each of the three motions are, A, B, and C, and then we'll go from there. So the first one is simply recognizing all of our expenditure and revenue budgets for the fiscal year. Again, it's taking our annual meeting budget and then just accounting for the revisions that I just talked about. That's how we get to seven A. The seven B motion has to do with the official tax levy for the year. Again, remember, tax levy is accounted for in two funds. It's our general operating fund, which we always call Keep the Lights On kind of fund. And then the second fund is our principal and interest debt payment. So together, those two levies make up our total district levy. And then the last or third, seven C motion, is simply just to recognize our two fund balances for the fiscal year. So with that, unless there's any other questions, again, the first one is simply to address our revenue and expenditure funds in totality for the school year.
Board and board members? Any questions? Right, I'll entertain a motion on seven A.
Don't want to read it.
Don't want to read it. Okay, well, I will read it once we get a motion. And a second, hold up. So moved. It's a second. Motion by Leah, seconded by Carly. So Lee moved and Carly seconded a motion approving the revised 2022, 2023 revenue budget totaling forty-one million, three-hundred-and-forty-six-thousand, five-hundred-and-three dollars and expenditure budget totaling forty-one thousand, nine-hundred-and-sixty-two, seven-hundred-and-seventeen dollars, including all funds. The difference in revenues and expenditures is due to the planning of the Fund 10 expenditure budget exceeding the Fund 10 revenue budget by utilizing the assigned fund balance as well as the Fund 39 tax levy receipts based on the calendar year and expenditures based on the fiscal year. This will be a roll call vote. Are there any questions?
Keen to play it back.
All right, so this will be a roll call vote. Jessica?
Yes.
Rod?
Aye.
Leah?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Carly?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
And I'm also yes. Motion passes. All right, now we'll move on to seven B, the certification of the tax levy for 2022, 2023. I believe Scott walked us through this already, so doesn't need to do that. Are there any questions on this item? Okay, I will entertain a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Leah, seconded by Adam. Lee moved and Adam seconded a motion approving the Mount Horeb Area School District levy in the amount of fourteen million, nine-hundred-and-sixty-thousand, nine-hundred-and-twenty-eight dollars in taxes against the property of said district to meet the approved budget for the 2022, 2023 school year. This tax levy is six-hundred-and-sixty-thousand, seven-hundred-and-ten dollars higher than the 2021, 2022 tax levy, which totaled fourteen million, three-hundred-thousand, two-hundred-and-eighteen dollars. This tax levy necessitates a mill rate of seven dollars and sixty-five cents per one-thousand dollars of equalized value compared to a mill rate of eight dollars and thirty-four cents per one-thousand dollars of equalized value for the 2021, 2022, which is sixty-nine cents lower. Also a roll call vote. Adam? Jim?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
Rod?
Aye.
Jessica?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. I'm sorry, I'm also yes.
Do you want a glass of water?
Maybe. All right. Now we'll move on to seven C. Again, Scott, thank you for explaining this so well to us. Board members, any questions on this item? All right, I will entertain a motion in a second.
So moved.
Is that it?
Is that Jessica? Okay. Motion by Jessica. Jessica moved and Leah seconded a motion to apply the projected six million, seven-hundred-and-ninety-eight-thousand, seven-hundred-and-thirty-eight dollars, ninety-five cents, being twenty-two-point-three-six percent of the general fund expenditure budget as unassigned fund balance to meet cash flow needs. The assigned fund balance of five-hundred-and-sixty, five-hundred-and-sixty-three-thousand, three-hundred-and-sixty-three dollars will be used in the 2022, 2023 budget for planned one-time expenditures. This will also be a roll call vote. Jessica?
Yes.
Rod?
Aye.
Leah?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Carly?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
And I'm also yes. Motion carries.
Thanks, everybody.
Thanks. All right, we'll move on to a bunch of second readings. So we will start with seven D, the second reading of revisions to policy six-hundred-and-fifty-three-point-one, free admission passes to athletic events. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Jessica, seconded by Rod. Further discussion.
We have a question. Do we do any sort of pass, like reduction or for passes for like our free and reduced families?
I don't need the answer to that.
I was thinking about it after we met the last time, and like, this is awesome. But I wondered about like those families who could benefit from going to some of these school events, but...
We do some significant work in reduction of school fees around that, but I'm not certain as to passes. Student participation events, we definitely also help with, but in terms of families visiting, I don't know the answer to that. I could find out.
That's just a question I had after.
Okay, move the motion by Jessica, seconded by Rod. Further discussion.
Quick questions to how we're defining local. Could remind me of that. This is something that veterans asked us to insert in local. I would define it pretty broadly because I think if it's good for Mount Horeb veterans, it should be good for one key veterans and, and all.
Other questions? All right, motion by Jessica, seconded by Rod. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, our next second reading is to consider the removal of board policy six-eighty-four audits.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion by Rod, seconded by Leah. Further discussion.
Let's spit it out.
I saw a lot tonight with all those numbers and things.
I know, yeah, I know.
I might have snickers.
Gold star. Yeah, right, right, exactly.
Okay, so motion by Rod, seconded by Leah. Further discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, second reading to consider revisions to board policy six-ninety, school properties disposal.
So a couple of things to share on this. Number one, I removed the word shall.
Thank you.
Number two, I inserted the superintendent's role in this under the guidance of the superintendent. And then third, I believe it was Diana asked to, which made sense because we needed to insert the statue at the bottom that accounts for this.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Rod, seconded by Leah. Further discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to seven G, second reading, consider revisions to policy four-twenty-two-point-one, commission of foreign exchange programs.
Second.
Motion by Leah, seconded by Adam. Further discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. All right, moving on to eight, citizens comments.
Yeah, one citizen, I don't think she interpreted anything. Hi, all right.
All right, perfect. Moving on to nine, our future agenda items, which are listed and lengthy. So if you have ideas for agenda items, please feel free to send them along. Moving on to ten, schedule of next meetings. Anything of note there, Dr. Soren?
Just a reminder about the board workshop occurring on the second of November, and then a special board meeting in order to meet around school perceptions and their availability. Thank you for an early evening meeting at 4:00 P.M. on November the fifteenth.
And I'll move on to eleven.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Rod, seconded by Leah. Further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.